Okay, we're going to open the second public hearing on the municipal plan. It's a public informational, uh, the second, sorry, scene for us. It's the second public hearing on the municipal plan. We had the first one, um, at the last meeting. And I'd like Charlie Elliott to come up to discuss the plan and some of the changes. Have a chair or sit down and use this.
Okay, the first, is that everybody here?
Can I hold it closer?
Can I hold it closer? Okay. At the first hearing last time, we had received a preliminary review from NVDA over the, related to the plan to adequacy to state regulations. And they found two regulations that came into law after 2015 that now have to be there. And they're related to designated forest areas in the city and areas for conservation, wildlife habitat protections that are a copy of the state review. And the complaint that they had was provided. I had gone ahead and modified one of our appendix to which it showed where they could be inserted. That was in Appendix B, current lane use. And I provided at that time, a copy of the appendix with one paragraph written in red reflecting the change. And I provided the two maps. One was a conservation priorities map. The other one was forest block map. These are maps that we had, but were not required to be in the plan previously. So I presented them for review at that time in comments and so they can be added. They went back to the state's report. If we do not add them, then when the state reviews it, if you approve it tonight, it goes to them for review. And when it goes to them for review without this addition, it will be rejected. Because it is a straight decline of the state law.
Any questions from council members on this? The only question I had is the plan that's online, would that 2015 be changed to 2020? The one that's been on there for the draft, once it's approved?
I don't know that. If it has to remain as 2015 or not.
Because this is an interim plan, correct?
Yes, this would be an interim plan temporarily, what's the agreement, while we rewrite the new plan. So I actually think in the prior amendment we made that it would remain as a 2015 plan.
Questions from anyone in the audience on the municipal plan? Comment on the municipal plan? And I guess we'll close that part of the public hearing. And we'll be taking up a vote on the municipal plan later on in our agenda. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is a public informational meeting on the articles to be voted on at the annual meeting. And I'll let Mr. Johnson say a few things.
Okay, does everybody got a copy of the, anybody need a copy of the annual report? Did anybody hear from any of the appropriation requests? So we can begin, Mr. Mayor. We start with the budget, school budget. I don't see anybody here from the school. So all the appropriations are ones that have been on here for years, the same ones. The amounts are basically the same because if the amount changes, they have to get another petition for five years to hold that same amount. The only new article on there is a, uh, the tax abatement for a period of three years from the Masonic Temple Association. Everything else is the same.
Now, do they may have any questions on any of the items?
Do we know what the taxes, so the abatement for the Masonic Temple, do we know what the amount of taxes they normally would pay?
I think it's around $1,000 or something like that.
What, I'm sorry, say again?
Probably around $4,000 or I'm not...
Total or a year?
Actually, a year.
Other questions on anything on the warning? And I guess we'll move into the regular council meeting. So at this time, I'll call the regular city council meeting to order for Monday, March 2nd, 2020, 6:30 PM. All members of the council are present, others including Jim Johnson and Cliff Trezger and Laura Dogan, our city manager. The next item would be to approve the minutes of February 10th, 2020. A motion that was made, is there a second? Second discussion. Hearing not all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries. The next is comments by members of the public. Before we go into that, I just have a couple of kudos to pass along. I want to congratulate Officer Willis and Ozzy for the tracking team of the year for 2019. That's a nice accomplishment for our K-9 unit in the city of Newport. I want to commend the rec department and the rec committee for a great winter fest. I heard it was well attended and it was a good day. And commend the fire department for overseeing the fireworks on the Long Bridge that evening to top it off. So that was a good, nice activity. I want to commend the 93 brave souls who decided to take a dip in the warm, beautiful light after May dawn. I want to commend that. It was nice to hear how many people came. Do you know I'm under the weather, I didn't go this year to watch any of it. So, but I was glad to hear there was a good turnout. So I want to commend that group of people, anyone, in my opinion, who's crazy enough to jump in the lake in the middle of, beginning of March into February, I give them all the power in the world. So those are just a couple, some kudos I just wanted to pass along before we go into comments by members of the public. So the first person is Thomas Evans, appreciation, communication. If you could use the microphone, and state your name also for the record.
Okay. Thomas Evans, I just wanted to...
Doesn't work, you gotta get closer.
Maybe it's not even on. Just to check it.
Yeah, please do.
Test, test. You gotta get right, right in there.
Right close to it?
I'm saying.
Okay, I just wanted to take a moment and to thank Julie Roboin for three years of service on the council and for your tireless efforts in representing and informing the public. And I think you've done it with much dignity and compassion. And I thank you for that. I also want to take a moment and thank Jessica Booth and the rec department for putting on some wonderful events, not just winter fest, but throughout the year. Throughout the year, I've seen some wonderful things. Thank you for that. And then as far as the issue of communication, I've stood here, up here many times in the last two months, expressing concerns, expressing questions, uh, some inquiries on certain things. I've written emails. The only response I have gotten is some conversation with Ms. Roboin. And Ms. Dogan was nice enough to send me a printout of how she came up with her calculations, but with no narrative. So I thank you for that, but it didn't answer any of my questions. So my question today is, why have I not received a response from any of you?
My responses received an email that clearly explained the budget. And that's how I looked at it. You asked for a, you asked... You asked for a explanation of the wages. A spreadsheet was created that broke down everything and was emailed to you. And that, to me, I thought answered the question, in my opinion. That's my opinion. I thought it answered the question. Because it clearly showed the numbers, the percentages, and the difference.
Mr. Mayor? The limit, timeline, I don't know if you want to continue with this?
I just want to just answer, you know, the, you know, that, just that, real quick. You know, so that's it. Now there you have it. No, no, that was just, I mean, it was, no, I just, I just want to say finally...
No, that's mine.
That spreadsheet was just as clear as a bell. It showed the salaries, it showed the differences, it showed the budgeted amount. And I don't know what more explanation could be presented other than what was emailed to you. I don't have the exact date because every council member received a copy the same day it was sent to you. And so I don't know what more we can explain about the salaries. You were questioning the $6,500 difference from a 1% to a 3% on a $50,000 and above salary. The spreadsheet clearly showed it. And that's, I think that ends, that, that, I don't know what more we can talk about.
Well, I think there's a lot to talk about. I realize I only have a certain amount of time, but you did not answer any of the questions I did. I asked. You gave me a sheet that showed her erroneous calculations of a 3%, when it was really a 2%. But figures that...
I'm not going to argue over the spreadsheet. The numbers are accurate. I, no, I think the two minutes is over now because...
I think the bigger point is that you have to send two emails and stand there and ask the question. And finally then, didn't you get a response? But until then, it was ignored, just like so many other constituent requests are ignored.
And quite honestly, I thank her for what she did, but it did not at all give me any validation for 3% versus 2%. It did not answer any of my questions to you personally. I asked you some questions on that email. I've asked the council people questions on that email. I've talked up here before and I'm getting silenced. So I, I answered my question, you, excuse me, I asked my question and what I'm getting back is more of the same of... And that's fine. Sir, with all due respect, you did not answer my email. You did not, I've seen you in public many times and you have not come up to me once and said, you know what? Thank you for sharing something with me. Thank you for your concern. I don't agree with you, or I might disagree with you, or what, nothing. And if this is the way you want to govern this city, in my opinion, it is bogus way of doing it. Because you're not answering to your electorate. Your purpose up there is to answer to the electorate. And I am angry that you just shut us out. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, sir, it's true.
We have Lori Graham, annual report.
My name is Lori Graham, I live here in the city of Newport. First of all, I want to thank the city council for the work that they do. I want to thank Julie for representing a good course in the city. Mr. Mayor, I do want to thank you for the conversations that you and I have been able to have a little bit more freely over the last few months. I really appreciate you taking the time to speak with me. We've been able to share opinions and even though we don't always agree on things, we still are able to have those conversations. And I want to tell you that I appreciate that. I am concerned about our annual report. It is a historical document, I think, that goes into the city of Newport. And I'm very concerned about the message from our city manager, who spends a good portion of her report talking about some, the social media and the conversations. And I find it very interesting that in here, in this historical document, she presents a very negative view of the citizens who pay lots of money in taxes to the city. And I find it very interesting in here that she quotes Bill Clinton in a 2007 speech that says, "Our common humanity is more important than our differences." However, having been asked the last couple of months, have I had an opportunity to try to sit down and speak with Mrs. Dogan? The fact is, I did try to approach her last April after a large city meeting over at the high school, to which she replied, "You have one minute to speak to me right here." And people in this room actually saw that confrontation. I tried to put aside differences at that point, that it happened during the Centennial planning, and I was once again pushed aside. I do not think that that's proper. I don't think that that's the way to handle, that is absolutely not looking at our common humanity and being able to speak even though we have differences. And I think that it's really important for the city councils to know that. I will continue to stand here and say that I don't believe that our city manager is doing a good job for our city in the way that she treats our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Move on. Ann Sharrell, annual report, water sewage.
Yes. And I do want to thank you for the mic, but that's on somebody else's time. My time is with respect to the sewer and water. You know, another town, a fire district quite in close by is having real problems with respect to their sewer and water situation and figuring out what the hell's been happening with them for the last five or 10 years. So when I look on page 32 of the annual report, first of all, with regard to sewer and water, I see that the income that we take in is $2.5 million a year. That's a lot of chump change that we take in for that. And I thought back over the last, almost 10 years that I've been attending budget hearings in city council. And I remember sometime someone saying that you guys sit as the, whatever you want to call it, the water board, the water commissioners, and you were supposed to decide what happens to water and sewage. Then I thought back and I thought, I don't ever remember you voting on this budget at any time. And for instance, this year, spent a lot of time putting up the budget with respect to everything else, recreation, everything else, landscape, but you didn't vote on that, as far as I'm concerned, you didn't vote on the sewer and water budget. It wasn't even presented to you at the time you were presented with all that other stuff, administration of the city, et cetera. And so with respect to these three things, or four things, I ask you, I think it's three, that I just picked up, I ask you to think back and see whether or not you ever considered these things. And maybe there's a perfectly good explanation, but I think you should be sitting and judging what happens with respect to $2.5 million a year. Water meters, page 33, they appear under the sewer budget, but then they appear again under the water budget for the same amount of money. And so the money budgeted this last year, the one that we're in right now, is $42,000 for water meters under the sewer budget, which doesn't seem appropriate because the water meters govern how much water we're using. And then again, it appears under, on page 35, under the water meters. And it may be a perfectly good explanation, but there's $84,000. And how much money did you spend on water meters this year? Do you know? How many, how many water meters at $500 or so a piece did you buy or install? And then salaries, if you look at the administration cost for salaries on page, under the sewer administration, the salary went up $20,000 for administration. And underwater, on page 30... Give me a minute. Under page 36, it went up $22,000. Well, that's not a 3%, that's a total of $43,000, the salaries went up in the water and sewage area. Well, if that's a 3% increase, somebody there must be making a million dollars. I don't think that the guy in charge of the water and sewer is making a million dollars and getting 3% more. So have you thought about where did that $43,000 come from? Well, some of it may be coming from the city. Laura may be taking some of that money for her administration of the water and sewage. But did you get an explanation of what happened to it? And then, when do you remember...
Mr. Mayor?
On page 37, I'm almost done. When do you remember on page 37, $60,000 for a BACO is, is in the proposed budget? What did you consider, putting that into the budget for 2021? These are things you should be reviewing, and I would have some confidence in you supervising the $2.5 million. Did you vote on it? Did you vote on it last year or the year before? I want answers to some of those questions. And I think that as citizens, and as, you know, we're not, I know you treat us as differently when we're paying for the water and the sewage. But as water and sewage payers, I think we all need to know what's happening to that money. And have you vote on it?
All I can say is, if you look at the sewer water sewer income, it's $2.5 million. If you add the expense items together, it's almost the same amount. These are enterprise funds, okay? They can't budget any more than it costs to operate those funds.
The question is...
They're only responsible, they, who they have, if they look at the expense budgets and not get enough income, it's where the rates go up or not.
The question is, are the expenses correct and justified or, and the only way that you can decide that is to review it.
I believe they are. And I think when the budget is presented to the council, you talk about the salaries being up, I think part of Laura's goes in there, part of Tom's goes in there, part of mine goes in there, might our departments. And that's why the salaries are up, because there was a 3% increase in the budget, so there's going to be an increase in the water and sewer. There was another question you asked.
The BACO, when did you review the BACO?
I'm sure that BACO is used to repair and put in sewer and water lines. And I'm sure the BACO costs a lot more than $60,000.
$60,000 in the water budget too, if you want to look at that.
Yeah, $60,000 in those budgets and there's some in the city budget. Because that BACO is not only used for city stuff, operations, it's used for water and sewer stuff, so you split the costs.
But when did, when did the council, as water commissioners, review it? Never.
The council, water commissioner, review that if the income is not taking care of the expense.
I don't think that, that's what the, what the league of cities and towns requires. I think that the supervisory board is supposed to review this budget.
They will. If the income isn't there to cover the expense, they'll review it.
And vote on it. That isn't when they're supposed to do it.
They're enterprise funds. You have to raise what it costs to operate the system. They're enterprise funds.
No, an enterprise fund means you act as a business with respect to some component of the city.
Right, because the city can't operate the water and sewer funds as a loss every year. That's why the income goes up.
Okay. We have Pam Ladd's budget, water budget, same thing?
I actually was going to give my time to Ann Sharrell, but what I'm really disturbed about is that you have just cut her off. You've not answered her questions. Dan just shut up to Jim's sign, which truly I understand because you were not answering the questions. Where do we as citizens go when we have legitimate questions? Coming in comments section usually greets us with a stone wall. We can't put it in writing, we still don't get answers. Where do we get answers? The questions about water budgets are legitimate, they're real. We don't have the answers to that.
He was answering.
He was not answering her questions.
I think you're fine, but I did answer the question.
Not in a way that clearly makes sense.
Not in the way, not in the way you were.
Those of us who are obviously too stupid to understand, you know? You're telling me to shut up again?
No, no. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't say that.
The conversation from the table should go through the mayor. And when you're talking directly to Jim, you're kind of doing what we try not to do.
Okay, I hear that.
Now, let me, let me explain something to you about this. And you know I questioned Jim in the regular budget.
Yes.
He transferred a significant number of hours at his people and he worked on, on our sewer and budget. And I forgot, I figured out how much it was, around $30,000. I think it might have been a little more. Okay? That is probably the administration increase. Now, as far as answering questions directly from the table, just like anybody, people need time to digest what's been asked.
Correct.
And I do believe you should get an answer. So if you ask a question, it should go in the minutes and either the mayor or the city manager should respond to you. It shouldn't just be left out in the air and you never hear from anybody.
However, as you know, Dan, that is what happens, which, as we've all read the report, and particularly the report, your piece and Laura's, which basically trashes us for using both social media. We have no choice because we come to you, we ask a question, we get no response. So where else do we go for a discussion? We have no choice. And you may not like social media, but it's here to stay. It is a place for people to ask questions and for discussion. We would like to be able to have a discussion here. That's not happening. We get shut down every time. So anyway, that's my two minutes.
Move on. The next item is the Newport City Municipal Plan and a vote. Does we need a motion?
I just, I, I just have one question because I went to the last meeting. I guess my question would be... I guess my question would be, is this an amendment or is this a new plan? Because it sounded like at the last meeting that we wouldn't have to do anything if we approved this as it is now.
You're talking about the plan?
Yeah, the plan.
So what was your question?
When I was at the meeting,
Yeah.
I got the impression that this was an updated plan.
Yes.
And based on the discussion about the proposal and stuff that this being approved the way it is, we wouldn't have to do anything. It would be good till, whatever, the five years or eight years. And now you've called it an amendment. So I don't know if I'm approving the plan or an amendment to the plan.
I think you're approving an updated plan, all right? This last attachment is a requirement NVDA picked up, which is required by law to be in there. This, we agreed to be able to reactivate this plan. You've basically approved the continuation of the plan with what changes you've seen until we complete the development of a whole new plan. Now, the purpose is so the city has a plan in place to conduct its business in the meantime. We have to have an approved plan.
So that's my question. It's an approved plan if we approve it, not an amendment to an existing plan?
It would be an approved plan if you approve it, because you're approving the whole document, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because they removed a bunch of outdated, you removed a bunch of outdated items to from plan.
Yes, yes.
Outdated and updated, you updated sections, you removed sections that weren't, not sections, but paragraphs that weren't valid anymore and...
Right, like EB5 references were taken out. And, and like this plan that NVDA picked up, if there was a new requirement or something, it was put in. But it's, it'll be an approved plan that is being done this way. So the city has a continuous plan, while we spend about a year and a half doing another one.
Anything else?
Can I just respond to that question?
Yep.
I thi- I think that the, the confusion is around what's legal and what the city wants. So I think that this is going to be, Charlie, tell me if I'm wrong, this is going to be a legally adopted plan, which will allow, as Charlie said, the city to conduct business. Where the other thing comes in is, is this really the final plan that we actually want to have for the city? And I think that the consensus of, I mean, now most of the planning commission members are gone. But anyway, there are few of us left. And back when we were a complete commission, we said that we wanted to create a plan that was more visionary, but we didn't have the tools or the time. So that was the whole reason for updating it. I mean, for, for going further. But I think that it's perfectly legal as it is. It's just a question of whether there's a will and funds to make it a visionary plan.
So, so this goes back to the date. Won't the date change if it's an approved plan?
I would think it should be twenty twenty.
Do not fall back on twenty fifteen.
Yeah.
Will it not, will it be twenty twenty?
That was my only, that was when I was looking at it.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie.
Okay. And I know the planning commission has been looking at some other plans that, as a bible.
What's legal and what, what, what do we really want? Two different things.
Right, oh, I know, oh, I know. But you've been looking at some other plans to get ideas for potentially writing in.
Right, right.
All right, with all that, can I entertain a motion to approve the plan?
I'll make a motion to approve the plan.
A motion made, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded, discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, are there any major differences from the plan that, in this plan compared to the last one?
I can answer that.
Go ahead.
All, all of the sections within the plan have been updated to be current information. So yes, there are some substantial differences. There's no mention of EB5 anymore, for example. And many of the other sections have current data, which is required, that sort of thing. So yes, there are, there are many changes to the body of the plan. Is there a change to the vision of the plan? Not particularly. But I would say that the nuts and bolts have all been updated and are current, which make them different from 2015.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, move on. Mr. Johnson, new business? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, next item is planning commission resignation. We received a letter from Woody Page resigning from the planning commission due to time constraints between his duties in Montpelier and the planning commission. And so he resigned. Because he has told, in his letter, he has to focus on his duties being a representative in Montpelier. So we would need a motion to accept his resignation. So, motion made?
Seconded.
Seconded, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, how many members have resigned from when until now? I understand Mr. Page is like the fourth one, is that right?
That's right.
Same as me. I, he asked me the question.
Mr. Mayor, so what?
It was four.
Four.
Mr. Curtis, and then Mr. Curry. Mr. Page.
Colleen.
Where does that, do you, does the city have enough members now to be legal? Is there a state or anything in the charter that says you need it?
It's a five-member board, you need three members for a core.
Is, is it five members for the charter or for the state?
It's five members. We designated five members. You can have it up to seven or nine, something like that. We have a five-member commission.
So the city, the city's okay, it doesn't need to worry that it's, that there's a problem from what the council said.
I have a question related to that. Will, is it okay to ask it? Okay, I appreciate it. Will the, will, there are letters of requests to be a member, where I think, do you want by Friday? Will this new resignation change the date of anyone that might want to sit on the board? Will that, because it was after the fact, will there be any? How will that opportunity come for others that might be interested in that?
What ended this Friday was a request to fill a vacancy that existed before. And that is terminated. We'll be advertising the new vacancy within the next few days and start another round. So there'll be two, three weeks of opportunity for other people to apply for this vacancy.
Thank you, thank you for letting me ask.
Mr. Mayor, wait quick if I may. Who decides? Is that the council or does the planning commission pick their own members?
The planning commission will interview the members and make recommendations.
To, to the board?
Okay, moving on. New business, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I do have one thing. I got a call from the House Operations Committee. And they're trying to revamp city charters. They had, they sent me an email with South Burlington, Burlington Ruttin, and Newport City. What they want to do is, is, to ours, is take out section thirty-eight that refers to paupers, which we don't deal with anymore. And the other thing they want to do is make all, everything gender neutral. Sort of aldermen and the elder persons and that type of thing. They wanted me to tell them to go ahead, and I told them, I, I can't do that. It's got to be a council decision, so that's why it's here tonight. I don't see anything wrong with it, we don't deal with paupers anymore. And I don't see anything wrong with gender neutral stuff. Goes up to you. Their words were cleaning up city charters.
The motion being to allow the legislature to, of government operations to clean up city charter? I guess, I just thought it was kind of, I, I just thought it was an unusual request. I mean, I, I have no problem with it, but I just thought it was unusual that the legislature goes ahead and amend and changes charters, where usually it comes from the municipality up. So that's where I just thought it was kind of interesting.
And if they think they can do it, it wouldn't be a, we are creatures of the state.
Right, the state, we are, that's true, we are creatures of the state, so they can, basically. They have to approve any charter change anyway. They can either reject or approve any charter change. So they probably, it's well within their authority. I mean, I have no problem with it.
So we move to allow the, the commission to, it's government operations, right?
Yeah.
To, to remove the paupers section and use gender neutral language in our city charter?
There is a draft of it online, I believe, right, Jim?
Yeah, that's where I got this.
Okay, a motion's made, is there a second?
I'll send it.
Is that good? Discussion?
I'd like to see the rewrite before I vote, yes or no.
Well, I don't, I don't want to. I don't think there's, I don't think there's going to be a rewrite. I think they're just striking section thirty-eight. They're just going to line it up.
Well, it sounds like they're going to get much more than that. You know, they're going to go through, I mean, there's some historical sections that, boy, change them. You know?
Yeah, I don't, you can check. I mean, that's all they want to do to Alice. I don't know what they're doing to the others.
They're making everything for, after he, I looked at it real quick over the weekend, just out of curiosity, it looks like they're just changing everything. Instead of him, or he to be his, her, or what?
They.
They, things like that, is what they're doing. To me, it seemed pretty straightforward from, from my take on it, that it was nothing. Changing, they weren't changing the meaning, the meaning of anything?
I've read it.
Oh, okay, that's, yeah, okay, that's the section they took in.
Now, you can, you can check on it, you want, before you do anything. I'm just relaying the information. I told them I can't.
Absolutely need it by.
Well, when they emailed me, they wanted it right then. I don't know when their next committee meeting.
Because we're not meeting next until the sixteenth.
No, they're, they're in that committee meeting. I mean, I can email the girl and say, yes, no.
The person.
Yeah, yeah, the person. Thank you.
Yes, welcome. Yes, the person.
Gender neutral. Tell them you want to see, you know, what the rewrite's going to be. My impression was they're striking all of section thirty-eight and changing all the person, all the men or women to all the person. Those type of things, council person. That's all the information I got.
Well, we do have a motion and a second.
So we can either, Julie wants to withdraw her second, I can withdraw my motion, or we can just lay it on the table to the next meeting. So we can vote?
Yeah, I, I'm willing to call down there, but I don't think, I don't think something's going to be any different. That's the impression I got.
I didn't see any issue, which is, was my opinion. Well, I guess I'm going to have, all those in favor? I'm just going to have a motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Three ayes and one no. Any other new business?
No, it's all the new stuff.
Kevin?
No.
I don't have any new business, new business, new business, okay. Move the old business. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah. So I've got financial documents need to be signed. These are for, this is seventy-nine. This is seventy-nine thousand four hundred. It's for two level monitoring devices in the, see all those?
Huh?
You overfill? And this has been talked about and approved before, the previous meeting, so it just, there's a couple places the council needs to sign on here before they can get their money. I was in too long about when we approved those.
December second. You approved, you approved this at the December second meeting? Nate Elliott was here for that presentation. This is a loan documents that are pertaining to the vote that you approved at that meeting. There's, I think there's two resolutions-
Two places in the back.
That need the full council signature in order to process.
So, let's see. I'll just pass it down. That's all I, oh, no, I didn't know. I have got seven liquor licenses here that need to be signed.
Approved.
One is for budget redemption, one is for Family Dollar, West Side Deli, American Legion, Newport Natural, and AG Supermarket, must be district. These are all ones that had them before, so the chief doesn't have to go through them because they're just freebies. So. Well, I just need a motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve the liquor license. Liquor license is presented. I will list them all when I write them down.
We need a motion to approve all the liquor licenses.
Move to privilege, do the licenses presented?
Need a second, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
That's all I've got.
There's two, two segments required, two different parts.
There's three, there's three. There's three? I missed one.
No, you did, you got it.
NVDA on my wrist.
Look, I think we are, we got to sign the last page. There's two places on this one. Anything else, Mr. Johnson?
Just a thank you for setting up the sound system. That's great.
And anything else?
No.
Okay. I don't have any old business. Anything? Anything? Okay, the next? I'll take Mr. Johnson's thunder. Don't forget to get out and vote tomorrow, because usually whoever does that, I'll take his thunder. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, March 16th, 2020, 6:30 p.m., here in the council. We need a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Seven twenty-five, a motion to made, is there a second? Seconded, discussion? All those in favor say aye? Opposed?